Call this meeting to order. Would you please stand for the pledge? Before you, you have an agenda. I have no additions to the agenda. You gotta turn your mics on.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recognitions. Yeah. There you are.
Tonight, I would like to recognize Summer Rath. She was awarded a high school equivalency diploma through the state of Wyoming on May 10th. And so I'll have Summer and Shirley come forward to be recognized for that. Shirley shared with me that Summer spent over 99 hours in preparation for this exam. In order to receive the high school equivalency diploma, she has to pass in five subject areas in math, reading, science, social studies, and writing. So we just wanted to recognize her through our office this evening. And also, I just wanted to share with, with this program, they have expanded and Shirley shared with me a couple of years ago. Shirley has been, Shirley Demerit has been with our program since 2002. So she's, she's worked with several students. And they have added a career module to the program. So not only do they prep our students for the high school equivalency diploma, but work with our students on career preparation too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Are there any other recognitions? Yes, Mr. Hoffman.
Alright, it's been a little bit since I've been to the board. And so we've had some state awards come out for the spring sports. Just wanted to recognize Gabby McBay for being selected to the 3A girls all-state team. Holden McConkey placed seventh in the 200-meter dash at the 3A State Track Meet. And Jacob Prell also finished sixth place in the shot put at the 3A State Track Meet. So just wanted to recognize those for representing us at the state level. And then just wanted to give a thank you to Diana Branscombe, Dottie Silti, Sally Hoover, and Beau Gregory for all the help of the graduation ceremony. Dottie and Diana do a lot of the upfront organizing. I basically just have to stand up there and read because they do so well. And then Sally and Beau on the, on the music and lights is always appreciated. So, thank you to them.
Thank you, Bryce. Any other recognitions? Yes, sir.
I think it's over here. Brandi, thanks.
Bumped it. There you go. Like Bryce said, it's been a long month. So I'm gonna go all over the place and I'll probably repeat some ones that, that have already been shared or will be shared. But of course, to Mrs. Colgrove and Mrs. Marshall and the art show that happened. I mean, that seems like a year ago, but it was this month. And all the students that just did a really great job with that. So shout out to them. To Mr. Whipple and all the band and choir students that put on some really great concerts back in the middle of May. We recognize them. To Kathy Beeler, Scott Beeler, Matt Consimmon, all of his high school students that helped him. But we had a successful triathlon again at the eighth grade level. And I would recognize Gabe Hoover and Christine Swinteski as our winners for the boys and the girls with the new tri- with the triathlon. Gonna recognize Scott McGuire. He does a lot of things for the district and especially in the world of special education. But lately, I've been using him even for some other things and working on talented and gifted plans and getting some ideas for some other students on how we can better meet their needs and grow them. And so Scott's been super helpful that way. Then we get closer towards the end of the year. I would recognize Marshall Merchant for making some awards for us in the high school maker space with Mr. Beam. He produced some awards for us for our awards day that we had on the last day of school. Before that, what all do we got here? I would appreciate Mr. Allen in the transportation department for making it work where we took, I don't know, how many buses on May 24th? We took a lot of bu- how many? Well, we took four. How many did they take? So 11 buses left town on May 24th, taking a bunch of kids to a bunch of fun things. So I appreciate the transportation department for making that work. Still going. Kathy Beeler, Leslie Morris, for making everything work for the eighth grade outlaw ranch and the dance and everything else. We had a lot of good times there. I would specifically give a shout out to JD and Cindy Rhodes too for coming in and helping with the repelling. The kids just love that every year. And, you know, they just give us a day of their time to come in and do that. And so we really do appreciate that. Totes of Hope. And I'm sorry if I'm stealing some people. But Totes of Hope is putting around $5,000 towards the student lunch debt. So appreciate that organization and Eileen Vickers and what they're doing. And last but not least, thank you guys for delivering some coffee cards to the staff. Because that happened this month too, if you can believe it. That was all since we saw you last. So appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Brandy.
Alright, Tyler just made my list a little bit shorter. So ditto on some of those things. But I'd like to recognize the May Good Citizens, Thomas Goodard, Elena Reed, and Camden Holden. Also, a big shout out to Pam Carr and Gigi Fullerton. They were the, the organization behind the talent show. But then there's a lot of other staff that also help and like to say thank you to them. Also, thank you to Erin Hange, Gigi Fullerton, Crystal Walker, Dilly Marchant, Tara Dawson, and Brandy Evenson for setting up and tearing down the art show. Because that's well over 400 pieces of art they took care of. So. Big thank you to Dave Christensen. He did his very final last two field days. And that's quite a, quite a feat to put those on back to back like that. And I don't believe I've ever told him thank you for all his time for doing that. But it was appreciated. Also, thank you for the coffee cards. I wanted to recognize Becky Swinteski. She organized our first ever summer safety bash that I told you about, I think, last meeting. During that time, we had the ambulance service, homeland security, this, some members of the city crew, game and fish, the police department, and the highway patrol all came and taught the kids some things they need to know to be safe for the summer. And the highway department gave helmets out to kids who didn't have them, bike helmets. So I'd like to say thank you to them for that. Big thank you to custodians and several of our teachers. We had several moves and rooms yesterday. They got it done quite efficiently, actually. So it was great to see them all work together. And then I'd like to thank Cody Nelson. I don't know if you guys realize, but he's actually the one that does the majority of our posts for Facebook and Dojo and takes it upon himself to continue to do that through the summer. So it helps me out a bunch and I appreciate it. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Brandy. Any other recognitions? We'll move on to visitors' comments. Are there any visitors' comments? First of all, I should say welcome. I didn't do that earlier. I'm sorry about that. Are there any visitors' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to action items. Consent agenda. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to old business, which is the 24-25 school calendar. Basically, it was going to the four-day week. And so we wanted to take a vote on that to see if we want to do that, go forward with it or not. So I guess I'll open the floor. I'm gonna ask for a motion then. Yes, Tina.
I move to approve that we keep the schedule at a five-day week or a four and a half, because we're technically at a four and a half day week. So I move that we keep it the same. I second.
Been moved and seconded to keep the school calendar the same, four and a half day weeks. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The whole thing about this, nothing about it bothers me, except the fact that we asked our parents what they wanted. And three to one, they said a four-day. And that's fine. But we should not be asking for their opinion on a survey if we're gonna dismiss it out of hand. That undermines our credibility as a board, in my opinion. And so when people say the board doesn't listen to us, now they can hold that up as exhibit eight. So I don't think we should be sending out surveys and asking our parents or people their opinions if we're just gonna dismiss them out of hand. Oh my God.
Any other comments?
So we've been sending out that same survey for, I would say, at least the last four or five years. This year was the first year that we sent it to students as well. And this is the first year that it has passed like that. And I don't think that's any coincidence. I'm pretty sure that when I was in high school, if you'd asked me what I wanted, it would definitely be a four-day week. I mean, I think most students would. And I think when you read through the comments, you could tell that a good portion of them were, I would say, an overwhelming majority of them that were pro-four-day and made a comment were students. So I, for me, I feel like that's the difference. In the years past, it hasn't been like that. So.
Any other comments? Jason?
When, when, did we already miss the cutoff date for this though? So it, so really, it's null and void, truly.
No, we can, we can move forward anytime we want to.
But I mean, to get it as, as the schedule for that year, we've already missed that deadline.
No. We've missed it for this year, but we can submit it to the WDE anytime we want to.
Oh, okay, yep, you're correct. I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will add this to the information for the new board members. It's the, the year that the journalism students held a town hall about this. Their survey was also 70%-ish in favor of a four-day week. So I just want to add that to the conversation.
Thank you. Any other? I guess we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At this point, we'll move on to executive session to discuss student first issues under Wyoming statute 16-4-405 x little i. Can I have a motion to that effect?
Mister?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
There second?
Second.
Been moving seconded to go into executive session for a student issue under Wyoming statute 16-4-405 little x little i. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. LaCroix, would you give a recommendation?
Mr. Chair, I hope everyone can hear me okay. I would recommend to the board the expulsion of student A as mentioned in executive session with modifications.
Is there a motion? Yes, Jason. Need a motion.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of the superintendent for expulsion of student A with the waiver of rights hearing and modifications. Is there any discussion? Jason?
Mr. Chair, even though I was not directly involved with any of the, of this matter because of my employment and just to be open about it, I will abstain from making a vote.
Thank you, Jason. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to new business. Classified resignation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would recommend to the board the resignation of Jesse Sterns as the district LPN and permission to post the position.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the resignation of Jesse Sterns as the district LPN and to post the position. All in favor, signify by saying, oh, excuse me. Did you have a comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Early graduation request, Brad?
Yes, in your package, you have a request. And Jessica's actually here with mom and dad. I would recommend to the board that we allow her to continue her pursuits. However, I think it would be wise for us to see how her summer classes are completed and also the ACT so that we know that according to the policy, that there's a plan in place. And that if she is able to accomplish this lengthy goal, then we would allow her to have early graduation. But she's got a big summer in front of her. Have you taken the ACT, Jessica? Yeah, so I think those would be the big descriptors for her to be admitted. Because you have not been admitted to the medical program yet, correct? Shatteran State, okay. So I would say.
Sure, go ahead.
I didn't print it out today, but I also made a speech if you guys are willing to listen. If you guys can hear me. Age is no barrier, it's a limitation put on your mind. Jackie Joyner. Many may know her as one of the all-time greatest athletes in American track and field. For those who don't know her, she won three gold, one silver, and two bronze Olympic medals. I could simply say I live up to her saying. I've dreamed of college since I was in second grade. I've always pushed myself to the extremes. And an example of this is, would be my spelling. I had spelling bees from a very young age. I kind of had a harder time learning by that point. But I kind of hurdled over it because of all the hard work I put in. I had to test from Monday, which is when we got the words, all the way till Thursday, when I finally got 100%. My test being on Friday mornings. Another example would be through COVID. In eighth grade, we didn't really have a teacher. We actually had a fourth grade teacher that stepped up straight out of college. She had no past experience. So I studied that night throughout all of the homework that she had. Because she ended up teaching all of our classes, because at the time I lived in California. So I learned all the subjects that she was supposed to teach. I taught them to the class. And then after that, I would again do it that night and repeat and repeat throughout the week. So it was kind of hectic through COVID as well, and I've just kind of pushed through that. Still, even through that, I couldn't say that I've really seen like my full potential. I haven't pushed myself to the extremes, I don't think. I, I've done and tried to include myself. I will say that I did a lot of moving. We went from California to Spearfish to here. Every curriculum is different, and so I am working on that. But I did adjust. And if you look at my last grades from last semester, I got all As except for two Bs. For my future plans, I am going to Shatteran. I got my acceptance letter. I called them and I was on and off the phone with a couple women. One of them, I think her name was Tanya Fox. But I, I was, every lunch, I put my effort into calling them and you can even talk to them. I got my acceptance letter finally. They finally, like, they wrote it out and signed it for me. So I will be doing that program. I will be doing the biology major at Shatteran University or State. And then after I'm done with that, with, so to go into that a little bit, I'm sorry. There will be, if I can come back next year, it will help me with my associates, as you may know. With that, I could graduate a little bit earlier from there as well. So that would be very helpful. Because after that, I was planning on going to Pearlman, Pennsylvania for my medical, because I want to be a cardiothoracic surgeon. I, I've been learning different languages to also help during the summer. This is kind of a side note. But just to show you a little bit more, I am planning to do international volunteering during the summers coming up. And I already have housing figured out. I'm going to be living with a friend that already attends Shatteran. Him and a few others will all be there. And we'll be sharing a rent or housing instead of going to the dorms because of help with the associates. I have most of my credits. If I'm not wrong, I don't remember exactly, but I will have 42, I think it is, if I graduate next year from your guys' school. The thing is though, is with me, I'm trying to get that head start. Because if I saved one life a month for a year to graduate early, it would be saving 12 lives. But if I got the associates from graduating early here, that'd be a graduating early here, not only, but two years from Shatteran as well. So that'd be three years, which quick math is, I don't know, 36? So that would be 36 lives I would save in just, just a matter of one a month. And we all know that doctors save multiple a week, not one a month. So it wouldn't just be helping me, but saving lives. And that has been my dream since my brother. Because what actually led me to this goal is my brother fell on the trap shooting line. And, sorry, I'm getting emotional. We went through, sorry. We went through like a time where we didn't know what was wrong with him. And I'm sorry. And all I have to say is that if we would have lost him, I don't know what I would have done. I love my brother more than anything. I'm sorry. That's what led me to becoming, like, wanting to be a doctor and help people. That also goes into the volunteering. And so if we were to lose him, or if I lost my mom, or dad, or family, I couldn't imagine my life right now. And I don't want to imagine anybody's life and having them go through that. Because if it was like that without, if it was like that when he was just sick and we didn't lose him, then I can't imagine if we actually did. I, I really can't. So I hope you guys look at the, the proof and the amount of struggle I've tried to work through to get to this point. Because to be honest, if I don't go through you guys, because I really hope, I hope you guys help me get my associates and work next year. But if I, if I can't go through you guys, I will be graduating this year through James Madison. And this won't only help me if I graduate from your school. Because if I, if I graduate from your guys' school, it will also give feedback on you guys and say, this is the type of people that are graduating from your school. And I'm part of like clubs. I'm doing FBLA, FCCLA. I did student council. I'm trying to do, create a club, Women's in STEM. And I don't know about cheer, but I was kind of looking into it. So my conclusion is diamonds don't shine, they reflect. Albert Einstein. Be the catalyst to change the direction for others. I am that diamond. I'm going to help people all over the world with the help of you or the people of my future. Don't affect possibilities to conquer. Thank you for your consideration and time. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Jason?
Mr. Chair, with that, does this, what's the state's rules? Or are we bound by a certain, a student has to accomplish A, B, and C before we can do anything like this? Or before they can advance to a certain grade level or anything like that? Does the state have any?
For the Wyoming high school diploma, they have to have the four English, three math, three science, three social studies. It's a basket of goods. Which by the end of next year, Jessica will have completed those. And she has the admittance into Shatteran State. And really, the next hurdle would be the admittance into a medical program. If I understand the, I think that's how that sequence works.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So Brad, do, does your recommendation, does that allow her to come back to school here and finish here? That's the part I'm a little confused about.
Are you, are you thinking like ACT testing and graduation?
Yes.
And then I would say yes. In the past, students that have left early have always been welcomed back with their peers to, to go across the stage. And then, I'm not exactly sure how the ACT test window works with that now, since the state pays for that. But I would have to check into that with the early graduation. I'm, I'm not sure how the, well, but you would take it next fall. So the, yeah, so the ACT would be under our umbrella as a test site because the graduation wouldn't occur till next year at this, this time. And then she would come back with a class of 2025, correct? Did I get my sequence right? 2024, sorry. Whoops. Did that answer your?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Jason.
Mister Chair, maybe I'm just making this more complicated. So the recommendation was. To see how the summer classes or what she completes for the summer classes. If if that was taken out, where would, I mean, what 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 does the summer classes do or don't do versus if we just said? Yes, we can just move her forward now.
I guess then my recommendation would say upon successful completion of her course of study. Then we would allow the early graduation and that way, if there were some unforeseen things that occurred, then. Then time would be um neutralized, if that makes sense. So I would, I I am, I'm in support of this. I just worry about this far out in front. Um I I think, and and please do not take that as a negative. Um but when when you get that far out in front, if there are some things, I want to make sure that Jessica knows that she's. She's more than welcome to stay here till the term of her. Studies exist. And I forgot about the ACT must not be required at at Shatteran. Yeah, the post-secondary, yeah, probably that and an interview and some other things, so, but that would be. That would be, she'll be well on her way by then. I mean, if it's not there, you interview till you find a spot that 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 is a good fit. Having a daughter that went through the interview process, it's, it can be a little wild.
Any other discussion? Could I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Been moved and seconded to approve the. Early graduation request. Um and that's depending on the summer classes and ACT. Is there any other discussion?
I'm sorry, if someone's speaking, we can't hear.
The the question is, is what time of year is the ACT? Oh, boy. Um where's Sonia when I need her to move? Sonia, when 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 is that test window? I'm sorry. Oh, Bryce.
There's national dates, um one, I believe in November, one in February. And then there's the state date, which is April twenty-something.
So there's three different uh test dates, so she could. She could take any of those three and it would count towards her her early graduation?
So the, she could take any of those three. The first two would, you'd have to bear the cost. The third one, that April date. The state of Wyoming pays for that.
Okay.
And I can get, I can get you those specific dates tomorrow if you want them.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Uh 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 on the ACT now, is there a minimum score or how does that work? I don't know how the ACTs work.
I would say that probably is going to be more on you guys on what. What the requirement will be of the institution you're trying to seek. Um I think there's, there's different levels of of what they deem. Admission scores. Um and I don't know what, I don't have a clue what Penn State's medical would would be. And I would be a fool to you. I would be a fool to you. I don't, I wouldn't, I would, I don't have that.
I didn't know, like, if it was like a, like an SAT, it's like, oh, twelve hundred or fourteen hundred or whatever, you know what I mean? I didn't know if there was a. Um like a number that you.
I don't, not that I know of. I do not.
Okay. I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion from the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Congratulations, I hope. Uh classified transfer, Brad.
Sorry. Um and and so, sorry, Dan, Dan, I did not have my mic on. Let me try this again. So I would recommend to the board the transfer of Tommy Yager Yager from the maintenance to the custodial po- position. And then because custodial has already been posted, um we will continue to seek in that pool. Maintenance is still seeking as well.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the classified transfer of Tommy Iger to maintenance from custodial. So I just. From maintenance to custodial. That's what it said. I said that. Can I say it right? Sorry.
Too much fr- too much fresh air today.
So the way it's supposed to be. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Certified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board Tori Vanderpoel Mobley uh to be the third grade teacher.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Tori Vanderpoel Mobley to be a third grade teacher. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Classified transfer.
I would recommend the transfer of Christina Rushton from the middle school special education para. To the elementary general education para.
Move to approve.
Been moved and seconded to approve the transfer of Christina Rushton. From a middle school special ed para to an elementary general educational para. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Classified transfer.
Yes, in in your packet. Um so this is a a new um attempt to sort of help with some of our. Ongoing math woes, so I would recommend to the board, uh Robin Stanton uh from the high school uh para. To the high school math and at-risk coordinator, and uh for the next year, that will be picked up by ESSER funds.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Been moved and seconded to approve the transfer of Robin Stanton. From a high school para to a high school math and at-risk intervention coordinator. Is there any discussion?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Paul.
I'd like to ask, how many applicants did we have for the position? Thank you.
We had two applicants. And we interviewed two candidates.
Jason, did you have something?
Brad, is that, so she's going to be the full-time math teacher?
No.
She's going to assist in math and also help with students that would be. Um in maybe just in in a, an assistance role in not only math but other classwork. Um I'm assuming it would reflect similar to what we do at the middle school. Some of it could be ISS, some of it could be just quiet time when a young person. Um or myself can't find focus that day. Um I think it's, it's, it's sort of a multi-faceted kind of of a program. But knowing that we went a year with um an online instructor in math, and we're going to be happy to have a full staff in math. Um but we still think there's going to be some students that are going to need some extra support. In anticipation of. I'm sorry, Ms. Rock, and you could address that better than I.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Permission to go out for bids, Brad.
Okay, let me give you a a sort of a brief description. So this again is ESSER funds. Uh one of the things that we did find out over the the COVID period was a way to look at um spreading students out. Um for all practical purposes, this this looks very similar to what you would see as a. Um an outdoor canopy area at a park. Uh probably the biggest difference is um this facility would have power, so. Classes could go out, students could go out and eat lunch, um do those kinds of things. And right now, the proposed area that we're looking at putting this, uh because of the need for power. Is sort of in the middle of the bus loop or the the grassy area outside of the middle school basketball court. Uh facing the um middle school, high school commons. Um so those are the two areas that we're looking, uh but we're asking permission to go out for bids. To find out what it costs so we can find out what we can do.
Any? Is there a motion?
Move to approve. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to go out for bids for an outdoor classroom. Is there any more discussion?
Mister Chairman.
Yes, Dana.
Um do we have a rough ballpark cost on that? I assume it it includes prep, concrete pad, all that kind of thing.
I'm going to say expensive, knowing the construction world. Um we're hoping under two hundred thousand, well, now, the budget only can be extended to two hundred thousand dollars. Um preliminary, I would say a forty by forty-foot slab is going to be. A hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with power. That's, that's just a guess.
Okay, so then we're, we're designed to in uh hold our biggest cost of kids.
We're hoping to be able to do um at least that, probably with. With seating for twenty-four to twenty-six students.
Thank you.
Would accommodate, I think that accommodates most of the core classes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Jason. I don't know if I missed it, is is this just an awning kind of thing or is it an actual enclosed building?
Nope, it's truly um, it's, it would be similar to what you would see as an outdoor picnic kind of an area. It's open, uh well-vented, um but it does have the canopy over the top. So on nice days, you know, you don't get the the sun beating down on you. Uh unless the rain's coming sideways, you could probably use it for for that. And then it could be used for any of the the classes that would be wanting to go outside, whether it be. Find and performing arts, math, science, social studies, anything of that nature, including a lunch area. It gives us a chance to spread out.
I'm just curious, when we talk about canopy in this Wyoming wind, it makes me a little leery. I mean, is that something that? I mean, looking at upkeep-wise, I mean, we've seen those horror stories where. The big fancy canvas tents get ripped in half. I would hate to see us. Spend money on something that isn't going to be durable with our windstorms.
No, you're absolutely right. No, I'm I'm assuming this would be a pretty heavy duty and and I would think probably a metal green roof. So it would blend in with the surrounding roof areas that would be around the high school there. We hope. Although you never know about Wyoming weather.
Any other discussion?
How often are we thinking we're going to use this space?
I would say primarily it's going to be a a big use in the s- in the early fall. Um preferably before Halloween, usually Halloween is when the, when the world changes. Uh and then depending on when they have prom, soccer, and track. Um then it would be a spring event. I I would think it would be really primarily used a a great deal during like summer schools. You know, where you, you're, you're in a more non-traditional kind of a setting. Um I'm not saying you couldn't use it in the winter. I'm just saying I don't want to use it in the winter.
Jason.
So it'll have picnic tables, all that in there. So I guess one concern would be is, are we going to have some type of schedule to? Hey, you had it three times this week, I want it this week, or, I mean, are we foreseeing rock, paper, scissors? I mean.
I think that would be a great thing for the building principals to have to to work out. And and really with most of our class sizes, and many times you could probably do multiple settings. Um I don't know if you're going to do much of a delivery of of stuff, but you could do the. You know, you could do your lesson plan presentation inside and then move to outside for the actual activity. Uh I think that would probably work better, even with Wyoming wind. I I I just think that would be the easiest way to use it. I mean, I taught in Palm Springs for four years um outdoors and. There's a certain place to talk and there's a certain place not to talk, and I would think weather's going to control that.
What what was the size of that again? Roughly?
I think they're looking at forty feet by forty feet.
Forty by forty?
Could go forty by sixty, um depending on cost and depending on placement. The best place right now for power usage is truly right off of that chiller unit that sits in the middle of the bus loop. Cost-wise.
I frequent the road by the high school on my lunch hour. And there are many, many times that I've gone by and I've seen kids and the teachers. Sitting outside the building and talking, I mean, obviously having class there, and their kids are just sitting on the. Grass. If that helps any, it might make you think about it.
And I think it's being primarily driven more by the science, middle, high school, middle school, science people. Um more than it would probably be math. But it's not limited to to science by any means. Lot of times, you know, the art classes are outside as well, um again, weather pending.
Further discussion? Dana?
I feel like it's a lot of money for two months out of the year. I mean, can? Can some, can someone talk to me about that a little bit? Like, is, is it, do you see the need for that? Um just can somebody talk to me a little bit about the the behind the scenes, I guess, a little bit in terms of. Why we're going to do this and and what that's going to do for us?
So the the full background knowledge on this is this is through the S and three grants of COVID money. If you guys remember two years ago, when we were spacing out and um spreading out. Uh there were some canopies that were outside of the middle school. Um a lot of times classes were going outside to have more space, those types of. Um, a lot of times classes were going outside to have more space, those types of things. And it was something that um I think teachers enjoyed and found that's a nice break in not being inside of the building. So I guess the space for lack of a better term. So will it be used by two to three months a year? Yes, hundred percent. Uh, it said that a month probably so. Will it get used? I'd imagine so. When weather's nice, February, yeah, nobody's gonna be sitting there. Um, I think it's an it's an opportunity with some money that does come from the federal funding otherwise. Uh, obviously, long-term upkeep won't do that, and that would be something I guess Greg would speak more better than I could. And I think this process is just going out for bids. It's not necessarily going to go good, except.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I I agree that the usage time, if you consider all day long, is probably only a couple of months. But there are tons of days in October, November, March, April, where it is cold in the morning and then when you're outside, you don't even need a jacket. So I would think the usage will be more than we might think.
Jason?
Is there a dollar amount on our S R fund? Where?
Yeah, the federal government gave us three point seven million dollars to spend in the district. Uh, we budgeted two hundred thousand for this particular project when we wrote that thing. What did we months ago or so? What did we use to not? We will not spend. Unless you guys got some creative ideas. And things need to be, sorry if I may, but especially lately, the direction from the state continues to remind us that it's to be in response to or preparedness for the virus and pandemic. So there are limits to what you can spend this money on. That meet those requirements effectively and still may provide some value to the district in the long term, even if it's only for certain months.
And I guess, you know, I agree with Bryce, you know, this isn't a we're voting yes for, but I'm uh kind of along with Tina. I just hate to have a two hundred thousand dollar picnic area. So.
Joe, you have anything? Billy? I guess everybody else has spoke. We have a motion, right? So I guess we'll vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries. Directors and superintendents report. Who wants to go first? Bryce, would you like to go first? I know you're not a director, but you're an administrator.
I will go first. Thank you. Well, we wrapped the school year. Want to thank all the people and staff, everybody that did a nice job um getting us to the finish line this year, who's trying and tough at times this year. Um, related and just through perseverance of the staff this week. So thank them for that. Uh, with that, though, you quickly turn the page to summer school, which started today. Uh, the students are in there working in E L A, math and social studies to recover credits or to have some extended time to finish things that they didn't finish during the year. Um, turn those credits to help stay on track towards graduation. Uh, so that'll be going on until June ninth. And then uh just wanted to talk a little bit about Y top here in your packet or maybe Celo sent it late, but I didn't put it in there. Uh, you have the high school Y top scores, plans, and just as you're looking at it, I'll kind of give you a rundown of how it is. You look at the top left, for example, uh, red are the students, the percentage of students who scored here at below basic. Yellow is basic, green is proficient, and blue is advanced. Did everything get that page? Okay, all right. So then when you look at the graph below, um, the state scores on the top and that's the floor. You can compare it on state average to those categories. Any questions on how you read it? And then I kind of go through each little slot. Good, yeah. All right, so uh ninth grade math, as you know. If not on, sorry Dana. As you know, um we had a struggle in math this year. Um, I believe the meeting in October, I said I called it a Band-Aid, not a solution. Um, that's that's what it was. Uh, so you can see that last year, the eighth graders, the ninth graders scored fifty four percent proficient or advanced. Uh, this year, they paid twenty two percent hit, thirty two percent of them um being proficient or advanced. And so uh well below the state average there. Um, one, you know, one slight positive, I guess, is fifty seven percent of the students did grow. Uh, but when that happens, it also means a large percentage of the students didn't grow in the other direction. That was forty one percent. Uh, ninth grade E L A, um kind of a trend in that area. Um, thirty three percent of the students grew, sixty seven percent did not. Um, one positive or something I think is positive is the last few years, we've had a linguistics class here at the high school. Um, that's students who are flagged from middle school who are struggling readers, struggling in their English language arts. Um, all of the linguistics students that we targeted in this year freshman class did grow. Uh, six of the ten of the top ten for growth of students um were from those classes, so uh they grew quite a bit. So I I think that's a positive there that that you can celebrate. Uh, but both areas, ninth grade, not great. Um, tenth grade math scores, um last year they're at forty two percent proficient or advanced as ninth graders, moved to forty three percent. Uh, right at the state average, which is also forty three percent, uh ninety percent of students grew. So those are um geometry students, so tenth graders. And then um if you look at the English language arts scores for tenth grade, um last year they scored fifty three percent. This year they scored a sixty four percent, so a positive eleven percent growth. Um, the state average is at fifty three percent, so we're eleven percent above in that category. Um, but a positive that I look at is eighty three percent of kids grew. So if you line those kids up, um, tenth grade, nine out of ten or eight out of ten of them grew in English language arts and math. I think that's always our goal is are the majority of our kids growing? And at tenth grade level, it did. So that's a lot of positives there. Uh, tenth grade science, um this is a kind of a weird test because they don't take it every year. You know, they take it as fourth graders, then eighth graders, and tenth graders. And so um last time I took it was eighth graders, fifty five percent were proficient. This year we only have forty seven percent. So there's been a dip since they were eighth graders. Um, it's still about the state average, though, um of forty six percent. So that's a positive. Um, there's there's no real comparison from year to year as far as growth. Uh, because there's new cut score in science this year. And so we didn't have like baseline theory for that against our students. This is the first word. Any questions? Yes.
Bryce, how long we have the
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
How long have we had the math curriculum that we have now?
Um, Carnegie math, this is three.
Of the half of Wyoming.
Um, that's great about this. Are you talking about like Carnegie math in general?
No, just how how we're how we're doing the math class.
Like a collaborative based classroom environment. Uh, you're
online. The way we're doing it is half the class is doing online, the other class is doing the the book, and then we switch and
Yeah, the the only reason we did that was because of the resignation and so we contracted again, using S R funds for the remainder of this year because we we couldn't find an applicant um who was qualified to teach this school year face to face. And so we taught the rest of the school year um in that hybrid environment where students were basically had a teacher um that was out of state but licensed in the state of Wyoming on the computer. Um, we in November, we approved to hire Mister Thomas, Travis Thomas, who is going to be starting here in the fall. And so that how math was taught this year in algebra one and algebra two um was not to be desired. Um, or an experiment that will willingly try again. If that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so we just did the one year with that.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And not not in geometry, not in tenth grade math, but in ninth grade math.
But just just
And eleven grade, yep.
So would would you contribute that twenty two percent? Because of that style versus the actual kids not getting it, i- if that makes sense?
I would say there's there's some gaps there due to that method. Um, for sure, I would say it again, I it's a Band-Aid. It wasn't a solution. And so, yes, I don't think that's positive. Um, kids that bought in, I talked about that at a few meetings this year. There are some kids that bought in and they're like, wow, this is my learning style and they really liked it. There's other kids that by the end of the year is you're at the dentist's office pulling teeth to get them to do math. Um, second, I would I would state, um, if you look at ninth grade math and ninth grade E L A, um, from that group as a whole, not all students, but many students in that group do not care about the Y top test. And their effort in that, I believe, shows. And so getting them to care, I think, this this ninth grade group about testing and test scores is our biggest challenge. It's not their ability. It's getting them to want to perform well on the test when they show up on test day. Because I I mean, if you're just diving in deeper, the ninth grade E L A teacher is the same teacher as the tenth grade E L A teacher. And there's a twenty percent decline in the ninth grade group and an eleven percent increase in the sophomore group.
Anything else for Bryce?
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I my five pages of Y top data are only for elementary and middle school. So if someone could send me those for high school, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Are you waving a white flag, Bryce?
I was showing you.
Oh.
We'll we'll re we'll resend it.
It's
We'll resend it.
We got it in our email also. Or I did.
Yeah, I had five pages of data in the email and that was all. Or is it an email this evening?
It should be the third page. What you do? You have six? Oh.
Yeah, I just checked. My attachment had five pages. It's fine. Thank you.
Anything else for Bryce? Did you have anything else, Bryce, I guess?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll get to sound she can. Tyler, you're up.
The Y top?
No, however you want to do it.
Um, yeah, as far as to report, I mean, I joked about it with recognitions. Um, we're starting scheduling for next year and developing power hour groups for next year and everything. That's, you know, how it goes. But I'm looking back. Um, that's all I really had to report is what hopefully you guys have to look at. You know, we've got to put something together, um, just based on all the conversation about state testing and everything last fall, just so you guys can at least get a glimpse of the early returns. Um, I would caution everybody, none of this is super official. You know, all that stuff will come out from W D E in September when everything gets really released and you can see uh district rankings and everything else. But um so Bryce laid the groundwork really well on on how to look at it in all three buildings. Um, so you guys have the middle school stuff there. Um, I don't know, I'll do a little freewheeling on a few things. You know, he he mentioned students not caring about the test. And for those of you guys that have been on the board, as long as I've been principal, you guys know those conversations that I've had with you too. Um, and I appreciate you guys' continued support in some of the ways that we we try to do that. Um, you know, and I recognize the transportation department, when we took four buses to Gillette, that's one of the things that we try to do to recognize those kids. Um, either for growth, which of course is what we're looking for, above average growth is how will those kids qualify? Or by being proficient or advanced. And this year uh was the best year we've had in my time as principal. Um, ninety four percent of our student body qualified for anything ever. Um, you know, some kids on on all the tests they took, they still qualified. And it gets kind of tricky as an eighth grader. If we're looking for growth in sixth grade and in seventh grade, you really do have to just kind of keep uh raising that bar. So um, I appreciate the board's support for that and the way that we continue to do that. It's not for anyone, and I know it. I mean, I feel weird about it sometimes too, because at the same time, this test is kind of done. Um, and if you want to know that, you can just look at the state average, where the state average, everybody's basically fifty percent is proficient or advanced. It raises questions on how you move cut scores and look bell curves and those kind of things. Um, previously, in my time here, both as a teacher and administrator, I've always appreciated the way the board um, you know, we value this piece of information. It's another piece of evidence that we use to assess students and assess the teachers. But we also have a lot of other pieces of evidence that we use to do those things. Whether they're the common assessments or even just the formative assessments that happen in classroom, uh teacher judgment and different things like that. Some of the stuff that Aaron's gonna talk to you about, the cadence, the fast break, the dibble, and all the other things that that we do. The district works really hard, K twelve, and try to see how kids are doing and then provide the appropriate interventions for them. So um, I don't know, I even now, um, so the big thing lately is M T S S, and that just seems to be the latest happening that everybody goes around and it's multi-pleton support. And this district has been doing it since I've been, um, but it seems to be a real catch and an act of education. And hopefully, we might not need the acronym, but we will. So I think that's something to be aware of, just by the board, there's some good things that happen. Um, yeah, but to that end, I would say our power hours is like one snap of the story, you know, trying to bring that stuff to you guys in the fall. I'm doing a power hour, one of them. But that's, you know, our our version or our model, what we're trying to do. It takes a lot of balance and a lot of people, but I think it's really cool. And I have, you know, a special education teacher that's doing this group focused on English language arts, we focus on media and art. They've got a group of two kids and and four of them end up being proficient or advanced. And they're really disappointed. They don't know for out of it, they turned out to be proficient or advanced. And then I have to remind them that they're in that group because they weren't proficient or advanced. Like they, we knew these guys had a need and we got half of them wrong. Um, those are huge celebrations that we have at the middle school. So um this this really, to me, I mean, this is, I love this stuff. I I can't wait to see where our our school lands uh across the state for this particular year. But we're gonna have good years and bad years and everywhere in between. I just I do think it validates what I would tell you guys in college, but you have a little bit of stuff like those little kids. I you guys can see the numbers. There's kinds of stuff above the state average, the kinds of growth, the double digit. Continue to work on a couple of things. That's the only other thing that I don't think Bryce mentioned, but I can see that. The way the science test is done every four years, yeah, that makes it hard to really pinpoint things for bits on this test. The other thing that they do in English language charts is every other year you have the writing component mixed in, that they don't keep those separate. So in sixth and eighth grade, I assessed on my reading skills, seventh grade, I tested reading and writing skills, but we're sure they can put that in, you know, the number. So if you want to fund back the state average growth in seventh grade, E L A, the last two years, we have a growth in the under way of state average. So there's just some good stuff. And then sixth grade math, if a math's here in the heart, she goes, no, sixth grade math is the last unit where the calculator did not totally get all of it done. Part of that test was how well can you do three-digit division with decimal points without a calculator? Sure, you guys have all been doing a lot of three-digit division without a calculator. Sure you guys have all been doing a lot of three-digit division without a calculator, they don't win. Really, really important life skill to be doing hand on 6th grade, because then they're allowed to calculate. That's why you see some of the tickets in the test yet. But I would love questions. You got all you have? That's it?
Randy, you want to go next?
All right, so to get started, I missed an important recognition, we did go to Waiteke and took like 300 kids, but big shout out to Bonnie Hee for organizing that every year, it's probably our most stressful field trip, but we have fun. And thanks to Troy for getting all seven buses going. Also, just wanted to give you a heads up, again, thanks to Troy for all of his hard work on the book mobile, that's going to be up and running. Suzie LaCroy and Sarah Whipple are going to be running it on Tuesdays and Thursdays this summer, so be watching for that. And then we can talk data, you should have the summary for the YTOP at a glance for N E S two. I'm not going to dig into all the reading and math because I'm not going to steal Erin and Sonia's thunder there because we have data coming out our ears. But that's what we've done the last couple of weeks is we meet within our grade level teams and then we meet in our building team and we really start to dig into, like I've told you guys, the individual scores, identifying how much individual kids moved, how, you know, what we need to look at in our tier one programming, what we need to do differently in our interventions. And so we really dial it on down to do all of that, and then in doing that, we also have to update our school-wide Title I plan, I think I mentioned that at the last meeting. I'm putting the final touches on that, we'll be submitting it and I'll send it to you just in case you need some light reading at night in the 50 pages that it is, but I'll, I'll send it to you. So just looking at our YTOP data real quick, there were some areas we were super excited about, other areas we really were hoping to see more overall growth, but we held, we held in there. We got excited when we looked at individual scores because we had quite a few kids that grew quite a bit and several, it was kind of frustrating that were like right on that bubble. And had they gotten two more points, it would have bumped them over and our percentages would have changed. So again, like Tyler mentioned, we really celebrated some individual growth there. I did want to really point out the third grade scores though. Those are pretty awesome, guys. Third grade was super, Sonia can attest to this, they were kind of arguing over 79 versus 80, they were, they were disappointed, they wanted that solid 80%. So it was a big deal. But I'm hoping, you know, it's early to say this, but I'm hoping that's really reflective of some programming that we've been doing in kindergarten, first and second. And again, I'll let those guys kind of talk about that, but hopefully this will be something we see on down the road continuing. Also, a big shout out to the kiddos in 4th grade and Shannon Huber, those science scores looked pretty good too. Again, she was bummed because she got 11% above the state average last year, and so she was hoping that they would beat that, but I told her this is pretty darn good and to be proud of it, but I appreciate that they all set some goals and, and helped set goals with kids and strive to beat those, so. Overall, pretty pleased, but room to keep growing, so our focus on our school-wide plan will continue to be in math primarily. What, you know, we've got some good things going in literacy, again, I'm not going to steal thunder, I'll let her talk to you about all of that, but our school-wide plan has some, some really specific goals in math and literacy, and we've almost gotten there in literacy, but we need to tweak a few things in math, so we'll continue to do that. That's all I have for you unless you have questions.
Any questions for Brandy? Thank you, Brandy. So which one of you two want to go first? Either one, doesn't matter. Go, Erin?
These guys laugh because they know how excited I get about this stuff. We are coming off of the best scores that we've seen, some of the hard work that teachers have put in, we're seeing payoff, so you'll see our Acadians. End of year percentage, remember I came in, talked about this mid-year and we had some pretty high hopes. And I don't think I slept between middle of the year and end of the year waiting for some of this. But the teachers and the students, the paraprofessionals, all of the staff at the elementary school, this is really a testament to the hard work that they put in. Our teachers are best-trained teachers, I think I would put them up against anywhere else. There's a couple pieces in that I just put together for you, I did include three years, we can go back, I think I have 12 years worth of data on Acadians and looking at these scores, this is the best we've ever seen. We've tried to really focus what we're doing, make sure that individual students' needs are being met, we're spending a lot of time talking about students and readjusting if things aren't working for them. So as you can see, our kindergarten hit that 95%, there's not a lot of room to go up, they always do a great job with those students. First grade is unique because this is when students start reading in context, so reading what you would expect like a passage. That happens middle of the year, and a lot of times, and when we look at other schools' Acadians, we see a dip there, that that moving into reading a passage can be difficult, we didn't see that this year, and first grade worked unbelievably hard and kind of, as Brandy was saying, I showed them these scores, I was almost in tears so excited for all of them, and they said, well, it's not 90. You're right, it is not 90, we are, and it was fractions of a percent. And their, their focus was on those students that fell in that 10% that they wanted to move more. So that kind of is a testament to their dedication too. Looking at second grade, we see that they put some things together, started really looking at what students needed to keep them growing, and they hit that 93%, we've never seen that before. So unbelievable. And you can see 3rd grade, we see a lot of that also that you saw on YTOP and 4th and 5th as well, you can see some of what we've been working with there, we have, of course, different groups of students, so you can kind of compare those also across one group's trajectory, and we did end of the year data meetings, and I asked the teams to tell me what they were celebrating, so I just captured some of those for you, there was a lot of great celebrations. At the same time, we had conversations about, okay, this is where we are, we're celebrating it, how do we continue to grow? Because that's always, we want what's best for our students. You may remember the last time I came, I talked about the K3 literacy bill, which has had a big impact on what we're doing with literacy at the elementary school, and there's a couple pieces of that, professional development is a piece of that, and then Acadians is, so I think I received an email from Dottie today, I'd sent her that report, she submitted it, it went through. So this has all been reported to the state and as part of that K3 literacy bill, we have to use a universal screener like this, they look at YTOP, they already have that information, but we have to have something in place that is an approved universal screener, and that's where Acadians falls in. It also helps us triangulate data, so we can look at YTOP, we can look at this, and we can look at that teacher and classroom input. The state superintendent of public instruction has put together her strategic plan, you might have seen that come out. One of those areas that she's looking at is early literacy, and I'll be serving on her cabinet for that group, so hopefully I'll be able to share with you after some meetings this summer and where we're heading, heading with some of that. Right now, we're still waiting for all of the guidance on the K3 literacy bill, what we know is, right now, it, the recommendation is for a comprehensive literacy professional development for our K3 teachers. We've been doing letters for a long time, we've already met that through that training. So I did capture some of the professional development, there's a few more odds and ends that we have, but you can see that we're continuing with that Orton-Gillingham training, a lot of teachers did that last summer and they asked for the second set of that this summer, so we have a lot of teachers, that's a 30-hour training, and they volunteered to do that over the summer, so kind of shows that dedication and that they, that they have towards their students and their job. So that kind of wraps up Acadians for the year, and we'll start again with beginning of the year next year and do it all again. So any questions for me?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Your honor, Sonia.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm going to start just with the YTOP a little bit, although I'm not going to say very much because I think these guys have said plenty about it. One caveat, I would say, looking, like when you look at the table of each grade level where it says last year's percentage that were proficient or above, this year's percentage that were proficient or above, and the state average for the 22-23 school year. When you compare the year prior to percent of students that were proficient or above to this year's percent of students that were proficient or above, just take that with a little bit of grain of salt, if you will, because there are a different set of state standards, like it's 3rd grade state standards compared to 4th grade state standards, so the growth and cutoff in scale scores are not equally incremental for every single year. So just know that that's, that's there, so there's a little bit of variability there, but it's still a good way to compare. One way I know when we get the, when all of the scores are finalized and you get how districts have done over time, and you get district rankings, then that's what we've used to kind of compare year to year to year, because every, every year, the districts are in the same boat with new set of standards for the relative same group of kids, so there is that. And I would say, when you look at the state average compared to how we did in the 22-23 school year, anything that is a 10% difference, whether it be 10, greater than 10 above, or 10, greater than 10 below, that's fairly significant in my mind, so anywhere that it's above or, you know, 10 plus higher or 10 plus lower than the state average, I, I would predict that would be some pretty, pretty large groups. So if it's above, huge celebration, if not, gives us room to kind of grow and, and talk about. Also, when you look at the high school, just a caveat, I just noticed this, that when you look at the numbers that are listed as far as percent being above or below the state average compared to this year's numbers, those are not accurate. So the difference, I mean, it should be just be a straight across difference from this year's, from how we did as our percent of students who are proficient or above, so blue and green, compared to the state average, so just a straight-up difference is how that little number in the parentheses in that last column should be. So as I just glanced through there, just, just to note that. Any questions on, on those? So what I'm going to, yeah, Tina?
So, okay, tell me again, I'm sorry. Because I, like, I look at the first one and it's, you're saying 29% plus 12%, and what the difference is to that 41%?
Yeah, so when I'm saying, looking at like the middle column, so if I'm looking at 9th grade math, we had 32% of students proficient or above. The state average was 41% of students proficient or above. So that's actually a 9% difference. So we're 9% below the state average is what that should be, so instead of where it says 2% right beside it, technically it should say 9% below. Is that accurate? Pretty sure looking at the other pages, that's how that went, so just trying to be consistent. So for 9th grade math, we were 9% below the state average, for 10th grade math, we were even with the state average, so it should be a zero. For 9th grade ELA, we are 7% below the state average. And then 10th grade, we are, 10th grade ELA, we should be 11% above the state average. Just comparing this year's scores to what this year's state averages are, if that makes sense. Not really. That's why I'm a good math teacher, isn't it? Right, Jeff?
Well. So I don't, I guess, so if you're, if you add 29 and 12, and then what's the difference between 41%? It's not 9. Is that what you're saying?
No.
I don't know, maybe I'm not looking at the right thing. So aren't you saying 29 plus 12? Isn't this what?
So 29, so that's, I was just looking at in the table. 39, so maybe that is after, if the table's not up here. So go for it, go for it, Taylor. I brought it up, but it's different.
Calculated it. So in all the different things that you see there, the first number that you typically see is what they scored last year in the previous grade level, which again are different standards and maybe sometimes different kids, but it's kind of an idea of where they were. So the next number that you see this year, what the number in parentheses is trying to track for you guys is did that percent go up or down about 100? Which is correct, so if I'm looking at 9th grade math, it went down 22%, that's what Bryce talked about. When you get over to the state average, that is 41%, that's 29 plus 12, that's where the 41% comes from. What Sonia is saying, which is also correct, is the number in parentheses should compare back to that middle number, what did they get this year? And so what, what would be in that parentheses is we are 9% below the state average, and that is how the other two.
We're here, and we need to be here. We're nine, we're nine below.
The state average.
Okay, yeah, I'm in, the state average.
Yeah. Okay. Clear as mud, clear as mud, very good, very good. Awesome. Okay, no, great questions, great questions, because I do, because it is confusing when you have all these percentages and these numbers and you kind of throw them out, but they kind of all mean different things, right? And where do they come from and and I really like to be accurate, so, yeah. So what I'm going to talk a little bit about, not a whole lot, but just kind of following up what Erin was talking about at the elementary K5, we've done Acadians for a long, long time, so that's kind of your ELA benchmark assessments as kind of the triangulated data, so YTOP, the Acadians, and like teacher judgment, teacher grades. So for math, well, we didn't, we've always kind of struggled on what, what, what should we use for math for our third measure of triangulated data? And so three years ago, we instituted Fast Bridge, is what it's called, so the fourth and fifth page of your packet are the Fast Bridge sets of data, so I'm just going to kind of briefly talk about page number four. So this is a summary of basically the past three years, so we've done Fast Bridge for three years now, so we kind of have a little bit of longitudinal data. And this data is just for the end of the year, so how students are performing at the very end of the year over those three years. So the kindergarten and first grade test looks a little bit different than the second through fifth grade assessments. There's two parts to the second through fifth grade, whereas there's one part to the kindergarten and first. The kindergarten and first, it is a one-on-one interview with the student. So they answer three different types of things, just one-on-one with testers, and get a score. While the second through fifth graders, there's two different parts, they're all taking the test online, is what it is. Some of it's timed, the automaticity is timed, it's basically facts, how many can you do in five minutes or four minutes, just off the top of your head? Whether it be adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing, and then the AMATH is more grade level stuff. But really, I think what I like to look at it is across a grade level, so from 2021 to 2022 to 2023, kind of that last column on each of those different tests, like how did we do? And I can kind of say that we're definitely improving, like these are, like if we look at most of the scores at the very end for this year, what we ended with on 2023, our highest scores in each grade level that, per, per test that we've kind of had, we're kind of tied with it, not all, but for a good majority of them. And a lot of those numbers are really pushing towards that 85% and up amounts of kids that are not flagged for any kind of risk on that particular assessment. So kudos to that, I think that's kind of in a testament of what the elementary is really trying hard to do. And if you look at the color coding and the horizontal movement, those are the kind of the same group of kids, if you will, like there's maybe a couple that move in, move out, like we didn't disaggregate those, but the same relative groups of kids over time, you can kind of see over time how they've compared. So for example, if I look So, for example, if I look at second grade in twenty-twenty-one, for A-math, there was eighty-one percent that um, were at or above where it was anticipated um, they should be. By the time that same group of students moved to s- third grade, they went to sixty-six percent, being where they should be at that particular grade level. So, different cut scores, higher um, expectations. Then, going from third grade to fourth grade in twenty-twenty-three, they ended it, or they have ended at eighty-five percent um, where they should be. So, kind of that grade level's highest score as well. So, just kind of going at the diagonal. Questions on how to read that one? And I will kind of go back to the Y-top for just one small thing, cause I think Mr. Hoffman spoke pretty well. Like, there's lots of different variables of why these may come out, you know, the scores may come out higher or lower than what, um, you know, we had anticipated or hoped, or, you know, higher than what we'd expected and celebrations. And so, it's really hard to narrow it down to just one thing. I know that, um, so you had asked um, Trusty Jenkins about, how come like the ninth grade scores kind of seem to be what they are? And one variable to add to everything that Mr. Hoffman said is there's a fairly substant- like, there's a very, fairly substantial amount of students who are new to us in ninth grade. So, that's not, you know, usually it's kind of one or two. This one is more like a ten percent different. I mean, like, there's ten percent of our students are different, you know, a- added to that. So, good, bad, or indifferent, that may be a variable, it may not, but um, it's not exactly comparing all the same kids for the ninth graders. Okay, um, going back to FastBridge, turning over to the next page then. So, page number five, that gives you um, just kind of a number to glance of how beginning of year versus middle of the year versus end of the year, how many students, just the number ended up um, on each category. So, anything that was flagged yellow or red is either high risk or some risk. And so, you can kind of see, like, in kindergarten from beginning of the year, twelve and four compared to kindergarten at the end of the year, four and two. So, just kind of how students have moved, how they've grown, um, test expectations have changed as well. But, that kind of gives you just a number of, um, we talk about these data meetings and we talk about students and are we do, you know, what, what are we doing to meet the needs of every single student, whether it be supporting or enriching? And so, that kind of gives you an idea about the numbers of students individually that we talk about all the time. Um, and I know that, so kind of moving on, if you don't have questions on that, I'll stop and pause for just two seconds. If you have questions on the um, FastBridge data. Seeing none. Um, one thing that you um, will probably hear coming up quite a bit from the State Superintendent of Public Instruction is really looking at what we're using for a state test and how we use that metric. Um, and so, so you might hear, like, there's two terms that we use quite a bit right now, achievement, which is how many are proficient or not proficient, basically, and growth. Are they growing? Regardless of where um, students are ending up with, are we showing growth? So, those two metrics are what we use right now. Um, and that's a, I think, I believe, that's a pretty good practice. Cause we keep our standard set on have they met the standard with the achievement, as well as are we making enough targeted growth to keep the trajectory in- improving, lowering the gap or really excelling? Um, and I know that the public and um, the Superintendent of Public Construction is really looking at that and maybe suggesting that we only go with growth. Um, and so, that'll be just interesting to watch. So, just kind of keep your eyes on that about how that may or may not go. Um, uh, just to kind of finish up a little bit, Erin did talk about the strategic plan that came out. There are six um, basic initiatives that have been outlined to the state and um, through WDE, and they all, each of those initiatives um, have a cabinet-appointed members that were assigned to that. So, that's how that will be moving forward, going from there. So, um, just kind of keep your eyes on those. And next week will be a full week. We have our new math teacher will be here doing a workshop, so he can get up and running and trained in all the materials that he needs to be. So, on June sixth, if you want to swing by the math room, we will be working with Mr. Thomas. So, he will be here, so we're gonna welcome him. And then, I will be at a meeting next Thursday in Casper to look at the next set of standards that um, the State Board has asked audit committees to look at. So, we'll be looking at PE and Health, Fine and Performing Arts, and Computer Science. So, those teams have all gotten together on their endeavor to kind of narrow those specific set of priority standards, if you will. So, that's enough for me. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Tina?
Um, is the, the intervention specialist um, for the math, i- is, is that sort of like walk to learn for the high school a little bit? Like, are we, are we targeting those kiddos? How will we know who needs intervention and who doesn't and? Data, what data are we, or, you know?
This year as well. Basically, right now, you have your tier one students, bottom of the tier, they're able to make it, you find. Every tier three students or your highest average students get a lot of support for them. But then you have those kids in the middle, tier two students, you don't have a lot for them. So, this is our, our chance, I think, at the high school to provide some tier two support for those.
Bryce? Bryce, I might be asking the same thing Tina is. Aside from the, the twenty-two percent, aside from just them not taking the test seriously, going into the tenth grade, do you foresee we need any special things for them to? Any other questions for Sonya? Did you have more?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Angie, did you have anything? Did you want Wade or Teresa? Karen, did you have anything?
Okay, I don't have any Y-top data, so. Uh, I just want to talk about our file review team. So, every year, we put together a team of teachers and we meet monthly and we go over files. Um, mainly, it's for compliance to make sure K-12, we're, we're kind of checking the same boxes and making sure that we're consistent with our paperwork. So, we always have some really hard conversations in those meetings about what we want our practices to be, and we really have to start thinking outside of the box of how it's gonna affect kids, you know, K-12. So, that team this year, uh, was Scott McGuire, Joe Lisa Wayne Scott, Crystal Benson, Elise Dickey, and Ann Will, and myself. And so, I just appreciate them and, and wanting to have those hard conversations and being open to that. Um, so, we started our Special Education Endorsement Certificate Program, where we had some staff members who wanted to pursue their certificates or their degrees in special education. And through um, the Special Education Grant, we are paying for that, or we're reimbursing them for their degree. So, we have four staff members who are taking advantage of that, and two of them will be, are supposed to be student teaching in the fall. So, um, that's been a really great benefit, I think, when we can grow our own and really help them out. So, kudos to them. Um, so, just starting for summer, um, we have our summer school schedule kind of underway, and, and really, we don't stop in special education. So, at the elementary school, we're meeting Tuesdays and Wednesdays and doing a jumpstart in August. Middle school, we're meeting Wednesdays for reading and math clinic and a little jumpstart in August. High school um, is gonna do some post-secondary tours again. So, we started a program called Zello, where kids get on and take interest inventories and explore careers and skills and kind of open their eyes to some different things that they might not see here in Newcastle. And so, we took that data and then tried to find facilities around our area that kids would be interested in. Um, so, this year, we're going to Yotech, Sheridan College, L-triple-C, Shadrin State, um, Pine Ridge Job Corp, Casper College, Rocky Mountain Academy of Hair, Skin, and Nails, and Ellsworth Air Force Base. That's what I had for you guys.
Any questions for Karen? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Kim, I guess we're up to you. I see Troy back there, I see.
Um, the only thing I wanted to add tonight, um, Bryce and Brad and I, we've been conversing back and forth on the MOU agreement currently that stands between EWC and our school districts. And Bryce and I, we um, found within that verbiage between on, when they talk about um, jumpstart, the jumpstart area and the category of, of how we handle it. We're getting more and more families within our area um, that have homeschool students, and they're interested in taking college courses through our district, and how do we handle it financially? Um, I think Dana was a part of that meeting and she might, might have shared um, uh, you know, the information in regards to, you know, other than the minutes that I read from the meeting. I'm not, I'm not sure all that was discussed, but they are taking it to legal counsel on whether they'll add verbiage back within the contract of how, how to handle it, or if our districts will handle it um, individually um, in the future and how, how we'll address that um, with, with families that'll approach us about um, dual credit and if we can open that up and, and, and pay for that credit for them. So, I just wanted to share that piece with you, and hopefully, I'll be able to share more as time goes and what is determined uh, with the BOCES Board. I think they're gonna try and um, relook at that contract at the summer meeting. So, hopefully, there'll be more information to come for that. And that is all I have.
Any questions for Kim? Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Troy, did you have anything? Okay. Any questions for Troy while we have him here? Thank you, Troy. Is there anybody on? Is, is there any board reports? Brad, no, board reports first. Yes?
I was able to attend my first um, Eastern Wyoming BOCES meeting. We discussed the preliminary budget, which will be finalized July twelfth, and we did discuss the MOU. They're wondering if we're interested in just some generic guidelines along the lines for the homeschoolers. They're just, they're sending it to legal counsel to see what the thought is. And that was it. I was at work with it and I have no camera and no speaker on my work computer. So, I typed to them and they think I'm a man.
Won't they be surprised?
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Uh, the Educators Benefit Trust will meet uh, Wednesday, the seventh of June. Pretty much just standard business, financial reports and all those things.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Brad, we're up to you.
May I ask a question?
Maybe.
So, Da- Dana, Dana, when you go to that meeting, is there going to be, or could you watch to see if there is anything on the radar where a spouse would have to take the insurance if it was provided at their workspace or workplace and not be able to um, be on a spouse kind of uh, dual? Insurance is, is there anything on the radar with that? Or if there isn't, let us know if there is, cause I could see where there's gonna be some push with that because of the potential money savings.
Uh, I will tell you my understanding of that now, but I will double check that next week. I believe um, the contract that we, that the district has with WAP uh, covers the fact that the district decides who can get insurance and who cannot. Um, I, I think that current, the situation where uh, a spouse who ha- is eligible for insurance at their workplace um, needs to take it there is already in place by some of the member districts, but, but I will double check that.
Thank you. I was unaware that it was a local district um, issue.
I believe it's the district's decision.
Good. And most of it I have for later under discussion items, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Future agenda items, is there any future agenda items for the next meeting? You're gonna be gone, right, Brad? Oh, boy. Yeah. Okay. So, who's gonna be your substitute?
We have yet to draw the, the unlucky straw to see who gets to do that, yet.
Okay.
Celo says Brandy, and, and I'm going to not look at her so that if she has an unkind gesture, I don't see it.
You got eyes on you, I know that. Yes, Jason?
Mr. Chair, I know Bo isn't here and I talked to Celo. Um, I don't know um, the board docs. If that needs to be put on there or if that'll just be part of his um, uh, report.
I guess we'll ask him to make a report on it, or we can request. Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Brad, you wanted to talk on discussion items?
Yeah, so um, in celebration of wrapping up the school year, um, Friday evening, uh, we will begin social hour at five. Uh, probably around five thirty, quarter to six. Um, we'll do the awards presentations, uh, which includes years of service, retirement, uh, along with uh, the beta group, um, who also has some special awards. Um, and then uh, with the anticipation of the weather not being real good, uh, the dinner is actually going to be uh, served in the downstairs dining room. And the those that wanted to either go outside or upstairs or wherever they feel comfortable would be able to do that. Um, but we're not going to set up outside just because then we know it will rain. So for those that can attend, we look forward in seeing you and and celebrating um, another school year. A a successful school year, um, challenging, um, but that's sort of the sign of times. Public education is not for those of the weak.
Any questions for Brad on that? Seems how we run out of things on the paper. Meeting's adjourned.
Dan, can I talk to you? Dan, I was just hoping to talk about our microphone. If you got a minute.
Oh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yep, there you are. Okay. I'm just wondering how you thought everybody's sound was part of the board goes.
I I would say the 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 horseshoe, the people in the horseshoe shape and at the at the lectern sounded pretty good. It was the table that kept um, cutting out and were really hard to hear. I'm sorry.
Was it the podium for the visitors or was it the table?
No, the the podium was fine, um, except for a just a minute or so of the young woman, but it was the table. And I, a couple of times I thought people were not close enough, but then sometime, most of the time when they were close enough, I could hear words real clearly and then it would cut out with almost a staticky sound.
They were doing a mic check and so the microphone that was also the one on by the computer and as we were just using it, we did not hear anything. So we think we have the issue at least isolated.
Thank you.
Uh, call to order the West County Rec Board.
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve, properly seconded. Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, recognitions. We have any recognitions? Dup, just hit the.
Okay, I want to uh, recognize Sally Hoover because all season she has volunteered numerous hours running sound for Welcome Tonight, a little dance thing, and she was there last night too. So I just want to give her kudos because she is, she does a lot for the sound system for the the auditorium.
Thank you. I would also um, recognize you again for all you've done with the sports and I mean, just again, just trying to keep everything scheduled and all of that. It's no easy task, so. And not only just the sports stuff, all the other side stuff that that you do.
It was a busy season this year, but I mean, thank you.
Uh, moving on, visitors' comments. Seeing, oh, Brad.
Mister Chair, I do have something that um, and since Teresa Teresa just mentioned it, I would like the rec board to consider for next school year um, some kind of a payment for those kinds of events, whether it be um, a concert, whether it be graduation. It can even be the um, children's centers. Um, it it's a lot bigger job than just a couple times. And I think for people to to do it and do it well, because it's, it is, there's quite an art to it. It's, it's not just sitting there pushing the green button. Um, I do think the the rec board should look at entertaining a way of compensating those individuals that are are taking time away from their families. And and it really is above and beyond even their call of duty, although it is, it's more probably in line with somebody that has tech skills. Um, but nevertheless, I I I think in the future, um, if it's okay, I will bring with Teresa's support a recommendation for you to consider.
Brad, would that be, is that just on a anybody come volunteer or are we talking, we have?
No, they tell me that the superintendent cannot and will not touch it. Um, so it it's, I think there's only like three or four people in-house that have been trained.
Yeah, yeah, I I know that Bo and Sally are the primary. Um, I know Sally has trained some students. But I.
I think whoever's been properly trained, if they want, you know, be on the list and then we could pay per event. Because even like an extra duty, like with a coach, I worry because sometimes um, the spring, for example, is is really overloaded there. Um, so it wouldn't be fair, but I think if you compensated it by the event, it would be more consistent for those people. I.e. Maron wants to go, you know, stretch her wings in that technology or or somebody else. I mean, I think as long as they have the training and they use the the equipment, which is expensive, um, it's nice. But I I if the if the board would consider that, um, I'll work with Teresa and have her bring a proposal to you starting next fall.
Tina?
Um, so for example, I had some people reach out to me and ask if graduation was going to be streamed. So it was that day. And I said, well, I don't know. Let me check. So I called Brad. Brad got ahold of people. So they were, they were doing it that day. So Sunday and they had not not long, they didn't have many, many, much time to put that up, you know? Um, because normally, I mean, we were doing that during during COVID, but we, I mean, it's not something that anybody's asked for recently and usually everybody will come to a graduation. It just so happened that some people that had contacted me, um, their family wasn't able to fly. And then others um, was a smoke issue, which I mean, we just happened to be really smoky on those few days. And and so anyway, I apologize for not thinking of it ahead of time either. I don't, um, I just didn't think about it. But you know, on a Sunday afternoon or a Sunday morning at last minute, that's kind of a big deal. Or some, I mean, because there's only certain people that that have the expertise to do that. So I mean, I I think that's, that's a good, I mean, I don't know. I would be in favor of something like that.
Also, I do, I do know, because I was there today and Sally was saying, they do have some new camera equipment there that they're installing. So hopefully that'll make it easier as far as the camera part. I'm willing to learn it. Um, but I don't, I can run basics sound like for the children's center stuff and lights, but some of that stuff is more technical. And I'm going to put together something on our forum too, because we've had some snarky people kind of not be so nice to Sally because of them not getting her stuff in time and expecting her to drop what she had to do to get their sound going and they're not paying for the facility, so.
Um, and I would fully agree with you, Brad, but I, would that be solely on the rec board? Or would part, would part of that fall under the normal school budget being some of that is graduation versus the children's center play? I I'm not opposed to to, you know, you could bring in a figure to us, but I just didn't know if some of that would fall under part of this and part of regular school district funding somehow.
Again, and I'm in a danger area here, but I was trying to think of something that would be easy to do with the bookkeeping piece. Um, so you wouldn't have the confusion of, well, this was out of that wrong account or vice versa. Well, that was a school, that's a school event, that's not a community event.
Right, and that and that's just, I just, that's what I'm trying to clarify is if if we do it this way, are are we okay in in doing it that way? Because like I said, I'm not opposed to that at all.
That's a good, um, I I don't, we'll, we'll work out the the detail on that.
Okay.
That's a good question. I don't have, I just, I was thinking that it it's something that really it does take. I mean, for for a small community. Then the people that walk away from our facilities that again are are impressed about how clean they are, how big they are, um, the technology that we have. And and again, I think for those that were affected by the smoke and health is one issue, travel's another issue. And let's face it, um, and we had what, forty-seven graduates and and the parking lot thought we were having the Super Bowl. I mean, it it was sort of tough to come by parking wise then. So um, when you get to classes of the sixties and seventies, I I would expect probably more people would just soon not have to fight the traffic. If I can sit there and the sound's good, the picture's good, I'll sit here and watch it from home. Just a thought.
No, like I said, I I I I'm not opposed to that. I just want to make sure that I just don't want somebody coming forward saying we're misappropriating these funds to pay for, so. Yeah, just if, like you said, if you get that together and then bring it to the next meeting or whenever you have that together, absolutely. Thank you. Anything else under visitor?
I was gonna say, any questions for me too?
None. Okay, moving on. Action items, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
I got a motion on the floor, properly seconded, uh, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, old business. Um, we have nothing, I guess. The only thing is, have we heard back from the Chamber of Commerce yet on on that? Okay. Um, new business? Do we have anybody have new business? Did, how are we on the ramp?
Um, so I applied the new stickies and they appear to be working. I just really used pressure and read the directions and so they have to, I have a new work order and to put the remaining part of the ramp together. And I know they're really shorthanded. And so hopefully, because I thought it was done and I'm like, how does this go in? And then Jacob goes, oh, no, there's still another part. I'm like, that makes sense.
Okay.
So that's where we're at right now.
Hey, I don't have any other information, anything for discussion items? Seeing none? Sure.